Sheldon Brown wanting to see if they can get out of the park. Dale made motion for a print, trace search of second motion, very private. Shelley wanted to know about the winters that they donated to the city and if it could be fixed on the fix at the end. Shelley would donate materials to give them fixed, she talked to Dave County. Doing the one at fire station, doing extra job. Dale made motion have somebody contact Dave County and share a second motion. Very private, so we'll get more contact and see if we can be able to work on the winters. Um, thank you to Dale for the decorations, for bringing the basketball to the park. Dennis, what do you want to do? We wanted to know if we could take down the wires from the park, they are not working in partnership, and the disheveling or the way the streets when they need to be evacuated down. Everything would not taken down because they are not in their way. After the special, the manual restribe to wire, I'll see how they can do that. Uh, the students, whether the postal company have that fired to the college, so funding that's required, how that the fire department may have a request signed, maybe the state council should able to request for funding until more information. Dale made motion to take fire department funding until more information from the college will be shared with me, seconded, very private. Sarah thanks the council for collaborating and sharing how nice it is to work with the group of council members. Sarah talked about Manhattan getting two thousand dollars to bring to it together. She thanked the local businesses for helping to give the same boost to it in the town. Thanks to Jill, Shirley, and you for writing letters and seeing it's part of the Atlanta city and need to improve on any major community that helps the city. Sarah had several things on the list to include the little towns that just fit some close to area, new vacuum, bros, new playground equipment, making improvements, making this land to a new government, a lot of credit for the Asian Hall, and so much more to improve. Um, we should get a six payments in the year twenty seventeen, and then get the other day, then she get the rest of the money. Sarah also talked about having a roll off coming and having a payment day as well. The city thanks Sarah for all of our work to improve Westfall Town. Match days will be in March, July fifteenth through the seventeenth. Sarah also talked about the C V C water drink for the city. As of now, the city of Walmart gave it to apply for it until our rates are raised for sewer. Um, Sarah also brought up the disheveling that needs to be worked out more than the now. Dale will look at it and will either call for a special, or wait till next month, or the pollution of it. Um, or in seventy-four, we're tweeting until next one. Trace to sharpen the motion to adjourn, share the second motion, motion very private. Reminder, next meeting will be July seventh at seven thirty.
Yeah, I don't know. Nobody said I need to investigate it.
That's why I'm not excited to get this.
And that's why I don't sound like I'm a concept.
From what I understand, this is a meeting in Atlanta, the Central Water Association twenty twenty-two, about water rates and sewer rates. And I think our water rates have been raised since then, I don't know what they are right now, but I'm hoping to share what it is.
Twelve, twelve. The water rate is more than twenty, sewer is twelve.
So water is twenty dollars a gallon. And according to this, that's four hundred gallon. You get four hundred gallon water without paying anything. And then, or five hundred?
That's five hundred.
And then anything over that, you take twenty dollars a gallon. And then how much is a thousand?
Twenty cents.
Twenty cents a thousand? So, the question was raising sewer rates last night, you brought up maybe raising sewer rates. Sharon, you said that would be harder on it, seeing the sewer somewhere.
That's, that's a good.
Yeah, but I think they were talking water, I'm not sure they were talking about sewer.
They were thinking the water would be harder.
Yeah. Yeah, but we don't, we don't charge the sewer rates by how much we're doing. A lot of cities do that and we got.
A lot of cities do.
Yeah, a lot of cities do that. Our city rates aren't. We're flat rate.
There's very few cities that have a flat rate.
Well, um, you know, for example, they think they're earning forty dollars. We, we can't use that.
There's what?
And then I'm charged thirty dollars. Four dollars a thousand gallon, based on that typical water that's sold. So if it's thirty dollars, we don't use any water at all during the winter. You get water during the winter, it's four dollars a thousand gallon. The sewer can, I think it's maybe three or four thousand. And then even twelve dollars, forty-two dollars. My sewer bill would be about that important. And that's not something we, we can do here. Does anybody know when the sewer rate was raised? From ten to twelve?
It was raised at the same time that the water rate was raised.
Okay, so not very long ago. And there's our. I don't know, right now it's not a good comparison because we're not making money on the water because of water usage. I don't know that we need to make a decision on sewer rates right now, but we get the water situation figured out. And redo the kiss later. Be my suggestion, I wonder what everybody else thinks.
And we need to get the water usage in a level so we know.
Yeah, where usually they get four hundred units instead of six, seven, or whatever. So I think sewer rate for right now is high. It's cheaper now, and everybody ought to be able to afford, afford that. Revisit it later data if we, if we need to. But everybody's got this in the lead over and see what they think. Okay, I guess, I guess I'll make a motion to keep the sewer rate at twelve dollars a month for time being to be revisited. And later.
I'll second that.
On to. Um, cold patch, we went out, last year we got it was one oh five a ton, this year it was one point five a ton. Dennis Winger called me the day or kid after the meeting, and said he would go over and pick that up for us if we wanted to. So, very appreciative of that, Dennis. And he, when he loaded it, they put on four and a half tons. So, the tar bill was five something instead of four twenty or whatever it cost. So, uh, you know, Dennis said.
Big thanks.
Thank you for getting that. And also him and his two grandkids come in and helped sweep out the holes and that we patched. Barry and I passed it, Tiki was there, Dylan showed up at some point. So we got that done. Wasn't half enough what we needed, but we're going back and getting more. So we did what we could with what we had. Streets, I think, look good. I heard a comment that some people think they did a productive job. Those people should have been out helping or done something in the past to make it better instead of complaining about it. So I think the streets are way better than they were.
And they just did Main Street just because of schedule, right?
Main Street is a county.
That's what I'm saying, they do that all the time.
They do it every three years or so. And that's what we're gonna have to do next year, we need to do East West Streets, there's not as many blocks. Five or six blocks compared to eleven or, shouldn't talk of less. But they need to be done next year on a regular schedule, every three years, new streets. No asking.
Now, will that include on Main Street there where the county doesn't get?
That's, uh.
Off to the sides.
I think, no, I think if we want that done, we gotta pay for that.
Yeah.
Extra whip, we gotta pay if we want that. So it does not include that. The disheveling in the park, I looked at it, doesn't need to come down. Still okay, I mean, you hook the chain around it and pull it down pretty well. But I contacted Lillian Winger's kids, and they had no problem with it coming down. So, council's approval sometime with a hook on it. Tractor has a coal hook on it, just pull it down, third, fourth, whatever. I want to do it with metal. Be rid of it.
Are there any ideas for that that sits on?
Well, Sarah's got benches coming, so, you know, a bench could go there, I guess, I don't know. Any other ideas, or?
The Legion talked about a monument of some sort.
Okay.
And you enter the corner of the park there.
Okay, be good.
No, it's part of park benches, you have.
So there, so I have to do that. There's no firm decision yet, there's some ideas floating out. So if the council wants to have that down, I can contact, go up, got the wires down from the card shack to the pole to the dishevelers that those are going on. The park, all the park is fed by the, from pump house. That's, wire goes to pump house and then straight to the park. So there's no power to the, to the card shack or the disheveler. And that, at some point, that probably, if they want power back to the card shack, you know, it wouldn't be that difficult, you'd have to run the wire again. Something that couldn't be that. I think first order of business is to get the dishevel down. Clean that up. Okay, any motions to have the dishevel pulled down?
I like the motion to have the dishevel taken down.
In favor?
So, the benches, I did talk to Dave County, they just bring them down there and then let's get the supplies taken to them, and he said he's had eight and what down there, so it seems like it goes down there, tell them where he wants me to put them. He'll work on them and I'll bring them back up.
Under our, under our minutes here, didn't we pass a motion one time for Luke to bring a printer, a new printer back to the city room? I don't remember that motion enough.
I don't remember.
Well, I think we need a motion for that printer to be brought back to the city, and that's what was purchased for the city. Go ahead. Yes. Yeah, I understand it's brought to the city and moved down to the park department, he said by consensus, whatever. From previous administration, from previous council, did you want to do that? Yeah. Nothing we did, except then and that. I think, I think things to that, we see. All in favor of the motion to have the printer brought back to the city room?
Right.
Three and four, three and four.
I just want to flip back my minutes.
I'd like to see any kind of minutes. I think review those minutes. Three. I see what happened here. May I ask your objection? Why do you object with how you see the very, I think, the city room?
It's not that I object. I don't recall voting to send it down there.
That's what I want to get back to my minutes.
So how to get down?
My minutes, I'm going to go into that question.
But then, did you, what, put back in?
And then it's all, and then the old, and then the higher. Oh, yes. And you need to, you need a personal, right?
No, I, I can't think of that.
You don't? So she don't?
So there is a printer, right?
Yes.
Wouldn't survive. Why do you approve it?
I might have an opportunity to set up minutes.
Okay, we, we need to take place, and premises. Just so we can pass that, for the next meeting. Okay, do you make it? These are men's motions, have that not next? This is a men's motion, Zach, you have to certainly turn about all this.
So you're gonna donate the printer in there to the fire department that does the city down to printers?
Okay, do you wish you could? Also, do you need federal, federal chamber?
Turn off the paper and ink.
The paper and ink that is free purchase.
Are you counting the new paper and ink that the fire department is paid for? Or are you talking about the paper needs the city to pay for?
They should reimburse what they do. I understand fire rescue association bought paid on the summer floor. So they're trying to. Or they should still reimburse what they do, but when they took it, so the time they had to buy it. And maybe I don't know how much that would be. No, I don't think I can figure that. Okay, do you have any other, uh, any other comments? Any comments?
I have a few things. Um, this is my first grant from a government association. And they, in a Zoom meeting, you promised our funding June seventeenth, and here it is July seventh, I call every day. They've had a shakeup in personnel, and then they want to start with their July budget, so even greater Manhattan is on them, we still don't have our money. So that's why there's been no, uh, at this point, I hope it lands during match days, and then maybe we do a, I don't know. So that was just my point there, it's, it's still having pride and we'll keep you appraised. In the grant, we had four park benches budgeted from Champion Tire out, the same kind of benches involved, but through the discussion where you're rehabbing the wood benches out here, are you, does the city not want those four benches? They're nice solid benches, but if we're gonna spend, and I put it in the grant that we get benches, but.
So. So you don't, if you actually lose that fund? Or go.
So I have to resubmit some paperwork with what we do with it.
Then it's kind of neat, then go for a gradic run instead of benches, or?
I could call and ask and, and check, and ask where.
Um, the benches, the benches that Shelley brought are repairable. They would probably be fine. It wouldn't be as sturdy as what those are.
Say it's not gonna be that sturdy, you've got a bunch of kids running and jumping and whatever, so you don't, then it wouldn't be that same, I don't think.
Are these gonna be repairables?
Yeah, Dave County is more repair. They're probably as sturdy as the service.
Yeah.
We were, we were working with the Legion about getting some with metal nameplates listing all of our members in honor of, to go outside.
We've lost it, and we've got to, we've taken, taken letters, and we lost them all, we have to, we have to have their names memorialized in some of them.
If you never have enough seats.
Location is the same as, ones that are different, are the same locations as one.
Memorialize local services.
Those are different spots that we're planning on putting.
Well, yeah, and I don't think.
Makes sense just to stay with. Get some of the good ones.
Yeah, well, yeah, we could spread the ones that seem to bear around. You know, more, more of the, you know, better than the park, they take more wear and tear.
That's what I, yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and skip the fourth. Second thing, mitigation funding opportunity, do you remember years or so ago when there was a lot of discussion with that mitigation plan that the city had submitted? Well, because of that, uh, the city was under the funding opportunity, and it's every year, March one to June thirtieth, and I think I forwarded it to Vicki and Shirley. But just maybe keep that on the records, that next year, starting March one, you could ask for tornado sirens, um, shelters for emergencies, and funding through that mitigation funding opportunity. So, and it closes on June thirtieth of every year, it's been a letter intent. I don't know if it's a matching grant or anything about it, but maybe just stick it in your Google Calendar, March one mitigation funding opens, and that way you know to look for it.
I don't have a Google Calendar.
Thank you.
Yeah, one or two every.
I didn't know that today, yeah, I got later day in on the wrong day.
Till March first?
March first, yeah, just stick in there or put in your notes to check on the mitigation funding, I'll let you know. There are more forms for match days, we've had money being sent in, I think we're up to thirteen hundred dollars for the Powhatan污化及改善 fund, and that was marketed with money to go, a check will just be cut to the Legion for their funding for their carpet or flooring, and then the other would go to tree top, tip top tree or whatever, for whatever, to go towards that. So that's, that's what that money is going for, and, uh, any funding that comes through will be marked, will be marked for that. And.
And Sarah, I did talk with the post office, and she said whenever that trash can shows up, the company will take the other one back.
Okay, perfect.
She said that was fine.
And then, um, on the IRS website, look up, I'm not seeing anything for the, the fire department, which Luke had determined, they had turned in the nine ninety N form since twenty twenty-two, but there is no mention of this Fire and Rescue Association, is it not under Powhatan? You said it was a, you said it was a five oh one C three.
The application is in for the five oh one C three, it is a recognized Kansas nonprofit. The application, there was some hang up with the accountant that they engaged to do the paperwork, so that application is in with the IRS for the IRS recognition of five oh one C three. So that's why it's not showing up, is because IRS has not finished their end of approving and kicking that. So you, you form the organization as a state organization, and then that organization applies to the IRS for recognize, recognition at the federal level. So if the state level is done, the application is in at the IRS waiting for their approval. So that's why it's not showing up in the IRS list, is because they haven't approved the final approval on that application and put it in their list yet.
I've done that process.
Sure.
But, um, that's well over a year ago, when we visited, you talked about that.
I think they straightened it out with the accountant. Three months ago, something like that, because he was supposed to put everything in, like we haven't heard anything back from the IRS, you know, you wait, you know the IRS isn't moving at lightning speed, so you wait, you wait, you ask about it, and it's like something's not right, and that's where they finally chased down, and he hadn't submitted anything on the federal level. So that's, that's why there's that delay in that.
And then as far as the city being recognized with the Powhatan Bank Building? I wanted to make sure you guys were also aware of the twenty twenty-five Historic Preservation Fund Grant, because this is a recognized building. I, you, I don't, I, that was previous administration. And this is the application for the Historic Preservation Fund Grant for twenty twenty-five. Hiwatha got one for their armory, to redo all of their armory windows, and they put these applications online, and they put the samples online, so if you wanted to pursue getting windows done in the building through this, to hang up with this, I, I think the belief is that once it's a national historic registry site, money just flows from the rooftops to the building. It's a reimbursable, you have to have money in hand, turn in the receipt, and wait to be paid. So it's, uh, if the windows cost a hundred grand, you've got to have a hundred grand to prove that you can pay for them and wait to be reimbursed. So, it is, it, you can't cancel your application, once you're on that, that, that ship sailed, so you, you've just got to understand that that's how that rolls, that I wanted to make sure you got that, so you saw an application.
So if you apply for the grant and you're approved, you have to, you have to do the project and you have to pay for it.
You have to show that you can pay for the project, yes.
Before, before it's approved?
Before you, before it's approved.
Could be a problem.
It, it, yeah, I think, I, I don't know how that was, was understood. You were prior admin, so what was the thinking behind that?
And I think that was before you.
You bite off grants that are the size you can afford, you don't have to do a hundred thousand dollar grants.
So.
There's also, um, rebate projects that you, you don't get a hundred percent, but cities are even eligible for the rebate program, and those can be done in smaller increments. So you just bite off what you can afford, and you don't try to do a hundred thousand dollar. And those can be done in smaller increments, so you just buy it off what you can afford, you don't try to do a hundred thousand dollar project upfront. You start off with a smaller project and, and work with those.
So, as an example, if we wanna do the windows upstairs, replace all those windows, because we need to give a bid, so we know what we're looking at as far. And does the bidder have to be approved?
So, it, it depends on the specific grant program, what their requirements are.
I, I would suggest you go with a reputable contractor who gives you a timeframe of them being done, so you're not on the hook.
And the, the state Historical Society has people who are very good at helping work through those processes, there's a lot of resources out there, it's not like you have to feel your way on your own. There's, there's folks there that, that's specifically what they help do, is help communities work through projects and grant applications to get historically listed buildings repaired and maintained.
So, I guess the, the question that, maybe I'll just segue into what maybe you guys were thinking about, or maybe now.
Well, just to talk about a little bit on, on the carpet, uh, just to, okay, as you guys, we have raised approximately two thirds of the cost of building the carpet ourselves, from donations and what we've done ourselves. So, so, I mean, I think we had a initial, uh, a quote for about forty five hundred dollars for it, so I think we're around fifteen hundred dollars short right now. And, uh, so, I don't exactly how that would, could match that, or could it set a match date or something, I don't exactly how that would work.
What we marketed was if we get, say we get two thousand dollars in donations, it's a fifty percent match, so we'll get three thousand dollars total, because we'll get a thousand dollars from the match. And then Tree Service will get fifteen hundred, and Legion will get fifteen hundred. And since you guys are already at, right, five oh one C three.
Yes.
I just grant it to you, we just grant it to you.
I'd like to make an argument, uh, we were talking about doing our own fundraising, and I think I could have Dennis and women involved while we were talking about what we were talking about. That's what.
Well. Years ago, but, years ago, we'd have a, we started by having a soup dinner on New Year's Day, and, uh, of course, that went by the wayside with COVID and, well, other things, and, uh. But I told Duane that, uh, there's very few of us, but, uh, there was very few of the third or fourth two veterans that started this thing, thing too. And they, they made it work, uh, and that was a long time ago, when things were a lot tougher, maybe not tougher, but, uh. They were willing to work and they got the job done, and I, I told, uh, Duane that, uh, there's a few of us, and we could have an old time ice cream social. And raise some money, it wouldn't be hand cranked ice cream, but we'll get good ice cream and, uh, and, uh, nothing else. Bob, I'll, I'll get our belly full of ice cream. But I think we can raise money, put a floor in, but, and, and we're talking about doing this, whenever Bob might decide some Saturday afternoon that we're gonna do it Saturday evening, that's what will happen. No, we're, we're gonna have it before, before school starts, probably, uh, maybe a late Saturday afternoon or a Sunday afternoon. Kinda gotta work around, uh, the fair, just working around the Fourth of July, and we got that pass alright. And so, uh. I don't know whether we'll get it done in July yet, but we're, we're, we're planning on having an ice cream social, and it, uh, it'll just be a.
It's a trip date down tonight.
What?
We could have a date, date, no doubt tonight.
Well, no, I have to go see my wife. But, uh, I think we're gonna have an ice cream social, and, and I think we, we can take care of, I mean, you know, we have other expenses too, but, uh. That's my thinking. And I told Bob, you know, it's, uh, all we gotta do is have a ice cream and, and some brownies and something to go on the, on the, on the ice cream, and, uh. And Max told me the other day that he could make brownies, and he showed me he could, and so. I told him, well, you might have to make about twenty, twenty packs of brownies. So, that would be fine, you just might have to get a bigger mixer. But he can do it. So, that's your plan.
Are we talking about using the, the park?
Well, we'll probably use the park, whether we use the facilities or not, we'll, you know, I don't know what, uh.
And then have this open so they can see what's happening and so forth.
We want, we'll open the Legion also, those that, you know, so they can see that we, what we've done, so progress.
So, do you want the women's and children to do anything?
No, we don't, we, it's gonna be simple.
Okay.
Women, that thing's complicated.
Like brownies.
I don't know, Max, probably might.
I don't, I kinda like the soup idea.
If we can get good things to go, and get maybe we can start doing it again, if we get things fixed up, and, uh, we'll just have to talk about that. There's not, not as many others that you should do, and it's a lot harder to do.
And then we used to do pies too.
Yes, um, celery used to, to build. Raise money, but doing that for auxiliary, is they, they would like for scholarships and so.
Pies and all kinds of things.
But they actually demo.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And then he wants to know I was calling, so he can do that.
Well, they, they were just talking about the specific.
We were, just a sec, just a aside there, we were very pleased that the sponsor, uh, Ben Selvedge, who watched David's recent, uh, we were very pleased to do that. And it sounded like he had a good time, and we're looking forward to hearing from him about his experiences.
I got, I got one thing, uh, Duane and I was looking at the ceiling in the kitchen, where the tiles are, are stained and stuff. Their tiles was put in the seventies, and he said, said not taking them down. And I didn't see any of them really drooping, and since they are nineteen seventies tiles. I don't know if there's any asbestos in them tiles or not. And, you know, rip it.